Mark, I got yours on the table, so I'm okay with that.
Sit up in the hot seat.
It's six thirty, so I'm gonna start.
All right.
Mark, you are on page.
Okay. Fifty-three.
Thirty-eight? Fifty-three. Page fifty-three.
So, good evening, everybody.
Nice.
If you don't know by now, my name is Mark Dean, the IT Director for the City of Jamestown. And I'm just here to present the 2024 budget. Page fifty-three. Of the executive budget. And it's pretty simple this year. Salaries, myself and the, uh... Sorry.
Personal computers.
Personal computers, thank you. Uh, yep. And then, uh, besides that, uh, we're moving on to capital projects, which I don't really have any. Other than, I would like to thank you guys for allowing me to use ARPA funds, especially for the switches. Um, some fiber throughout the city to connect the departments. So, uh, with that, it helps out with not having to have any capital projects for next year. After that, we have maintenance agreements. Uh, basically, it's, uh, uh, everything I'm really asking for here is under maintenance agreements. Exchange server online, I'll go into a little bit of detail about that. Uh, we currently host our email server on-premise, and it's a Microsoft Exchange server. Soon, Microsoft will be, uh, going away from on-premise email servers. Um, 2025 is predicted to be their last, uh, on-premise server. And in 2025, we're gonna be needing a new server. So, in 2024, I'm asking that we move away from the on-premise exchange server and move online. So, that would be a seventeen thousand dollar, um, hit to the budget, uh, which is under state contract. Uh, besides that, um, I have, uh, ma- remote access software that we use. Uh, we got away from, last year, we moved to this Beyond Trust software. And, uh, we're just gonna keep using that. It's very secure, um, allows not only people to remote in from home, but allows the IT department to remote in from anywhere in the world. If there's ever a problem, we can, uh, troubleshoot. From there, we have digital certificates that we use on the server, uh, to protect our server, uh, when accessing email. Uh, disaster recovery agreement for fourteen thousand four hundred dollars. We use that as data protection. Therefore, if there's ever a problem where, um, the main servers crash, the building, unfortunately, hopefully not disappears. We're able to recover all our data. Being backup software, be the next line item, seven hundred dollars renewal. That's an on-premise backup, um, just a secondary backup. And then, uh, next line item is the inventory software, deployment software that we use, another renewal fee. And that's used to push out software to other computers. And then, the Cisco Duo multi-factor authentication renewal for five thousand dollars. That protects, well, it's part of our insurance, we're required to have that. Uh, and then, uh, the Dell server warranty renewal for one year, which will get us to 2025. For fifteen hundred dollars. Sophos antivirus renewal for nineteen thousand nine hundred fifty-five. That's a little more than last year, because we've added some computers, some users to the system. And then, the next line item on my memo here that I gave you guys is highlighted, is the Sendio three-year renewal. Unfortunately, that was not in the budget for some reason.
Do we know why?
Yeah, it wasn't in the originally submitted, uh, budget, so it didn't make it into the executive budget. But we were notified afterwards of it, but it was too late to add it in.
Yeah, there was notification before the executive budget, but it's just gonna get added, apparently. Um, so that's, that's Sendio is our spam filter. It's our first line of defense for protecting the city from phishing, viruses, all that through email. Uh, and the last item on the list is the know-before phishing training, which has gone up because we've added users. So, that's now five thousand dollars and forty-seven, or five, five thousand forty dollars, sorry.
Question.
Yep.
How many people work remote? And, I mean, is it that they can access it at any given time? Are there people currently still working remotely, or?
Uh, yes, there's a few. It's not as much as it was when there was, um, COVID, but there is a few that do use it. As far as how many, again, it's a miss, I'd say three or four, four people.
And those are employees that are working primarily remotely, they just have access to the remote software.
Right.
Yep.
Correct.
Okay.
So, we need to add nine thousand dollars to the bottom line here?
We do.
Yes, please.
Even with that, you're about ten thousand, uh, ten thousand less than last year's budget. You're about ten thousand dollars less than last year's budget.
Okay.
And we appreciate it.
No? No?
Yeah, the twenty-two thousand, that was.
Fifty-four, five fifty.
Oh, is that on?
Page fifty-four?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Can I just talk in overall, twenty-two forty-eight?
Two forty-eight compared to.
Two.
Two thirty.
Yeah.
No, two twenty-nine, you gotta compare it to plus nine.
Plus nine, yeah. Compared to two forty-eight, all right.
Any questions on the renewals? Any other questions?
Not done, that's, that's only on the one line. Don't get your hopes up.
Okay. So, that line item never, wasn't in the budget last year, or probably the previous two years, because it's a three-year renewal. So, we've, we've had it for three years. So, I guess you could chop that ten thousand into three years. Nine thousand. Anyone else? And then, uh, the last line item in my, uh, is training. This, I submitted three thousand dollars for training. I guess it got chopped in half to fifteen hundred, but three thousand dollars for two technical employees, huh, without travel. It's all online. I think you'd want your technical people, um, to have training.
Well, you've already spent fifteen hundred, fourteen hundred and twenty-six dollars and forty-nine year-to-date through August, so I would think.
That's.
I'm not sure that sixteen fifty will cover everything, but maybe there's a compromise. I, I do have one concern and question. What, this year alone, in equipment, we had spent thirty thousand three hundred and eighty-four dollars and seventy-eight cents. And we have nothing in that executive budget, and you didn't request anything. My concern would be the nature of people's equipment. We're potentially going to, somebody somewhere is going to need a new PC for one reason or another, I would assume. So, you don't have that anywhere in capital or anything.
And not in my budget, but in the department's individual budget, they should present that to you?
So, everything is covered there, okay.
Mark does a phenomenal job at the beginning of the budget cycle to let every department know what equipment needs to be replaced. So, that was being a recommendation, we've added it into individual budgets.
So, this forty thousand, five hundred, and the thirty, thirty-one thousand we've spent was all for the equipment, like, servers, things like that? Okay. All right.
Any questions on that?
So, what I hear you saying is you're saying this travel and education line that was, uh, cut in half to fifteen hundred, are you saying that that's not enough for you? Based on what you've spent this, uh, so far?
Well, I'm asking for, right, I'm asking for three, and it's cut in half.
Right.
So, I was hoping to.
Can you just briefly tell us, you know, what this training or education is?
Sure, sure. So, uh, my department is made up of, of two employees, um, myself and one other person who's focused out of the police department mainly. And so, when new servers come out, um, when they're training on some of the new technology with that. Um, so I have a, a ton of Cisco switches in the building, which I'm the only one at this point that knows how to program them. Um, so that would be used for them to learn how to program Cisco switches. And, uh, a- again, any other technology comes along the line. Let's say.
Then you are getting a new server.
And we.
Where will your switch be doing?
Well, not till twenty twenty-five, it's the new, renewal.
Yeah, but your, the exchange server online, is that something that would require trading?
Exchange server online. It's definitely, it'll require trading. Correct. Does that answer it?
Sure.
Okay.
So, you're, it sounds like the three thousand dollars isn't really an inflated number. I know some department heads come in here and it's, you know, I, I've saw for years, it's like it's Christmas time. You ask for as much as you can, because you know it's gonna get whittled down, but it sounds like, uh, that this is not an unreasonable number, three thousand dollars.
I'm just trying to equip the IT department with as much knowledge as possible.
And just to be clear for City Council, the average spend on training the last three years has been about twelve hundred dollars, which has precipitated the cut.
Anybody have anything else for IT at this point in time? And just for overall clarity, um, as people indulge into things and hear more departments, we may have more questions, they may not all be tonight, but.
Sure.
Um, everybody knows how to read you, so thank you.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you, Mark.
Next.
I don't care who. Okay. I'm Lisa Bulby, and I am the Assessor for the City of Jamestown. I do not know what page in the.
Thirty-two. Thirty-two.
So, we have salaries, which is basically contractual raises and my buyout. And we have forty-five hundred dollars in replacement computers, because we need two new PCs. As Mark has told me. And then, we have, um, the forty-five hundred dollars is also in the equipment line. We have the telephone. The maintenance agreements, which is basically our copy machine. Legal notices, dues and subscriptions. Our first licensing fee, which is our system that we do evaluation on. Travel and education is to cover the continuing education for our appraiser and the new education for the new assessor. Office supplies is five hundred dollars, and other supplies is, um... Compensation for the Board of Assessment Review. At a hundred dollars per head. And that's it.
That's the expense side.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the revenue on assessment, I think people, it would benefit everyone to hear how those numbers were achieved.
The additional total assessed value?
Yep.
We had Schultz put on a large addition. Napa put on a large addition. The new Tim Hortons and Mosh. We had one new house. And the rest of it was just, um, porches and decks and sheds.
Do we have anything going into the, the, um... I'm not saying that we're getting paid on some of these homes, but some of these homes that are getting demolished have an assessed value, I would assume. Um, are those homes taken out of the assessment for 2024 that are on the list to be demolished?
No.
So, that's a miss.
I don't take them off until they come down.
I did get your email today, I haven't had a chance to under, uh, look at it yet, but I will, um, so thank you for responding.
Sure.
Anybody have any other further questions?
Ma'am, you mentioned salaries. I, I just wanted to clarify that, um, so people don't think that you're making that kind of money as an annual salary. Uh, you plan on retiring at the beginning of the year, correct? And like a lot of other departments, uh, you're gonna receive a buyout, uh, police officers receive buyouts, firefighters receive buyouts through accumulating benefit time. And that's why those numbers look the way they do, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
The line for telephone?
Mm-hmm.
I see the amount in there is less than its cost in years past. Is that a feasible amount, or?
We have less lines now, yeah. We used to have six people in our department, so we had six phone lines a minute, and now we only have three.
For ease of your mind, the last spend I had was five eighty-three fifty. So, a thousand should cover it.
Just making sure it's enough.
Yep.
Oh, don't want your phone to get cut off halfway through the year.
Um, could we get from the breakdown of what your budget split is for her buyout and what the plan is for the new hire?
And you were with the city for how many years?
Twenty-five.
Okay.
Thank you for your service. I have nothing else, I don't know if anyone else does at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Take a minute.
Oh, you were there, especially.
Took a minute around.
Okay. I'm Jen Williams, I'm the City Clerk Treasurer for Jamestown. Um, my budget is primarily on pages, uh, thirty-five and six. I had sent out just a brief memo on Friday, as well as a backup spreadsheet, just detailing a little bit about my request, um, in our Personnel Department. As you know, I had requested the part-time position that was vacated due to retirement to be changed to full-time. Um, as our canvas for a part-time Senior Account Clerk was unsuccessful. Um, so I have provided just, just some backup, just some numbers year-to-date on where we stand for different transactions. Some of the items, um, that are listed, they may have a lower count that are listed here, but they are a little more time-consuming, so I just wanted to include those. We're just really looking to, uh, the increase in needs of the residents and the visitors, um, has resulted in longer visits to the office. I'm just trying to maintain a level of service in the department that can accommodate everyone that comes to see us. Um, so that's why I've kind of provided that list of transactions that we generally see on a daily basis. Sometimes it's hard to think about it right off the top of your head. Um, equipment and capital outlay, um, Mark Dean informed me that we do need one new computer and one printer that will total nineteen hundred dollars for next year. So, that's really it for the spend. All of our contractual services are pretty, pretty standard. We're seeing increases in postage, obviously, so we've bumped up the postage budget. Records management has increased by two thousand dollars, um, just because we've been, I've been requesting more and more boxes be delivered from our off-site facility. So, that does carry a higher cost with it, but then we can wipe them out of the inventory there, so that we are not, um, paying for the space. Um, travel and education, two thousand dollars. Printing and duplicating, that's the cost of the tax bills to be printed, primarily. And then, the legal notices, I do publish quite a few legal notices, because I handle all of the ones for City Council, um, as well as the zoning board. I'm not sure if anybody told me those.
What's your, just made a timeline for the new hire?
As soon as possible. We, we've been short, um, since May.
And that's obviously gonna be a civil service-tested position?
Yeah, yeah, so we did canvass through the county, um, and I received no letters of interest back from anyone.
For the full-time position?
For the part-time.
For the part-time?
Yeah, we haven't tried to canvass for a full-time yet, because it hasn't been approved here.
Is there a list, would you use the same list for the full-time position?
It would be the same list, so.
So, Lisa explained the forty-two percent increase in salary? There's a twenty-one percent increase on here?
Uh, that was done under the executive budget for the request. What we're trying to do is try to ensure that all of our department heads are commensurate with not only statewide, uh, salaries. And I'll provide you all a copy of the Nikon Salary Survey. I'm just waiting to get that back, they did it, they just updated it in June, uh, for this year. Uh, but we're also trying to move all the department heads in a similar salary range, uh, because it's been harder and harder to, to keep some of those. And, uh, Cit's government work has been more and more difficult to, to keep employees, as you all probably have seen. Um, similar things happening in the private sector, where we've had to change benefits and, uh, salary amounts. So, you'll see some of those increase, uh, in order to make sure that they're commensurate with, um, what their counterparts are getting, uh, across the state and in Western New York. Um, and so that was the increase for Jen's salary.
It's actually twenty-seven percent, Andrew. Anybody have any questions at this point in time?
Good, good. Feel free to email or call if you have any questions. Thank you.
Page thirty-eight. For Corporation Counselors.
So, I will email the council a PDF version of what I presented today for your consideration during your budget period. My name is Elliot Armando, I am the Corporation Counsel or the City Attorney. Uh, pretty simple, doesn't really change too much for attorneys. Um, you know, you look at our salaries, we went up, uh, from one fifty-four to one sixty-nine for our adopted budget. Um, I will say that salary increases were directly, it was a result of the county attorneys. We have three county department heads who are attorneys with departments, and those salaries went up, um, by that amount. So, I talked to those three department heads, and I've included the Observer article on this issue, though we also have the Post Journal article as well, if anyone wants to look at that. We don't have any computer office updates this year. Our telephone maintenance agreement, we are grouped along with the other city departments, so I don't have any control over that. Uh, our maintenance agreements, that is our subscriptions to legal services, as well as the LexisNexis and Westlaw. Our dues and subscriptions, um, those would similarly be, uh, what we're subscribed to with the other city departments. Our court fees, you will see there's an increase there, that we've been doing a lot more federal litigation this year, as well as depositions, um, accounting for that fee going up. In as, in as much as we're doing arbitrations and federal litigation. Uh, travel and education, that amount was directly related to the conference that myself and my paralegal attended in Saratoga Springs. We'd like to attend that conference again. And stationery and office supplies, uh, that goes up and down depending on the year. I will direct the council's attention then to, there is a document that I brought in, in my packet, specifically that is our revenue ledger. We had budgeted originally thirty-six thousand dollars, we brought in via traffic violations. So far this year, as of October thirty, October third, we have brought in forty-six thousand. So, we're about ten thousand dollars ahead of schedule with a final quarter remaining. with a final quarter remaining for traffic violations. Um, I will then direct council's attention to page seventy. Well-known fact, my office manages the parking enforcement officers, not the Police Department. Uh, specifically this year we have brought in we've brought in two hundred and forty-six thousand dollars via parking, uh, costs in the city of Jamestown. We've budgeted two hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars. Uh, as you can see, the cost of the parking enforcement officers is eighty-three thousand dollars. And lastly, we will discuss page fifty-seven, which is claims. And on our claims section, as of today, we had seventy-one thousand dollars in our claims budget. We have ninety in total. However, we did incur a twenty thousand dollar bill to do the safer agreement, which has to be billed, so we'll end the year probably around the high forties, then we'll return to the general fund budget.
I'll add some of that parking ticket revenue came from me.
Funny, I thank the citizens of Jamestown for the parking ticket revenue, as well as the traffic enforcement. Um, I will also say that some of this is coming from the new fines that we have imposed for code enforcement violations and the quality of life taking orders.
Mr. Armando, how much do you make a year right now?
I am around eighty-five thousand dollars.
If you left tomorrow and you went to the District Attorney's Office or the Public Defender's Office, how much would you make?
I would be a second attorney, uh, so depending on, I would be in the low one-hundreds for Chicago County.
You're just staying here for the love of the city, correct?
There's a love of the city, but also there was, you know, quite a bit of conflict at the county level uh, with mid-level attorneys going back and forth between the different departments. So that was done at that level to stop them trading. Um, right now, I get backed up at city court level by ADA. We do have a critical shortage of attorneys in the county. I notated in my memo, you know, part of this issue is attorneys keep dying. Knock on wood, I'm still here. So, that's.
I was gonna say, Marie's still here.
Well, Marie's still here.
I'm not, I'm not joining any of that.
But ob- obviously, you could be doing criminal work, I mean, you could be doing family court work, and you could be making, uh, much more salary than you are here.
Yes, or the county, Attorney's Office also has openings.
I know it's been a contentious issue at times, but uh, you, along with yourself, or you and the mayor also engage in some secondary employment on the side as a moonlighting or side hustle positions, is that correct?
I will say there is something very opportunistic, i.e., Jeff Russell wants me to do the closing on this house, um, and pay me a couple hundred dollars, I will. But obviously, that doesn't, it's not something that I do on a full-time basis, and it's something that I really haven't done at all this year. But I do possess that ability, you know, there's that natural curiosity.
You do, really?
No. I don't. What?
I'm gonna start thinking about it.
All right.
The requested increase is twenty-three percent.
And I will add that that increase, Council of Neckland, is, um, in accordance with the county's new salary schedules for attorneys.
Elliot, if we have to contract out and get a, another attorney to do to a conflict or something, does that come from judgments and claims?
That, that does come from judgments and claims. Notably, we did hire Von Cheniken King, um, and that, that amount is coming from judgment and claims this year.
However, we do have a resolution to discuss in regards to that tonight, to pull it out of contingency.
So you're right, traditionally.
Uh, Brent, that would come from, any type of outside attorney would come from that judgments and claims line.
Anybody else?
Mr. Armando, real quick, do you have any employees that, um, work remotely?
Oh, no, not this time. We have a full-time office assist, uh, full-time paralegal. Uh, she is in the office during the daytime. I will say she does take calls during night, night hours. Uh, I've had, her phone is personally connected to uh, the city's phone, so it's a direct line.
Other than COVID, have you ever had an employee's work remotely for extended periods of time?
Avoiding me by extended periods of time.
Four or five, six weeks?
Not, not four or five, six weeks, but I have an employee work for three weeks remotely. Uh, you know, I'm cognizant of the fact that, you know, there are other options in the legal field if some of the county department has reached out. So I try to work with employees, um, if we're able to.
Anybody else?
I will add that, uh, we still have the Ombudsman or Associate Corporation Counsel position in the budget. Our hope is to have someone cover the Human Resources position. Um, we didn't have any luck finding that individual this year, obviously. Uh, we did bill DOD for those services, so we still have that amount from the Associate Corporation Counsel going back to the general fund budget.
Do you kind of look to recruit again, or?
Yes.
The waters again?
Yes, we would like to, um, you know, based upon this budget cycle. Um, you know, one of the concerns we had was, you know, this position existing through this budget. Um, and if it was to exist, we would obviously continue to recruit, and then we'd have a more sure sign, uh, for a timeframe for that position.
We did have qualified candidates, uh, we did not, but since it's an appointed position, we held off given the election.
I just wondered if there is anything expected to change in terms of getting someone at that that salary to take the position, but was just people weren't interested?
We did have interested parties. Uh, the big concern that they had was the launch of the position.
Understandable.
Okay, Carol? Take the silences.
I, no, I have a question. If the Ombudsman is not going to be Associate Corporation Counsel, like for DOD, why did we accept, why did we include a reduction?
Sorry. There's still an agreement between DOD and the, uh, uh, Corporation Counsel's office to provide legal services.
Okay.
So they still bill, Elliot and Tanya bill DOD for the use of their legal services both through, uh, Jura, JLDC, and DOD. That will, that will continue.
But it's confusing because it's fifty percent of the Ombudsman's salary, so what have we gotten billed back? What's the revenue we've gotten for this budget? This one item, year-to-date?
Well, I would ask, you know, the mayor and Carol, you know, our position is we would build a full amount to DOD since we have taken on all of the DOD work, um, to go back to the city budget.
Not arguing that, I'm asking what was the amount of revenue we've gotten year-to-date from DOD? Can you, if you can't buy that right away, can you send that up to us?
Certainly.
Not arguing the point, I'm asking for detail.
For specifically?
DOD reimbursement to the Corporation Counsel. Anybody else?
Thank you, Mr. Armando.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Comptroller's age twenty-seven, twenty-eight.
My name is Carol Malik. I'm the Deputy Comptroller for the City of Jamestown. Um, I've been in this position for a whopping three and a half months, so, um, I'm gonna do the best I can to justify my numbers. Um, for the comptroller position, that position is, involves every, just about every thing that happens in the city. Every department you deal with, there are so many moving parts, and, um, it takes a lot to know how many reports need to be done, when they need to be done, um, for the state and the federal level. It is, um, actually, in the private industry, you couldn't get someone to do the amount of work that is required for that position at eighty-five thousand. But, that being said, um, in two thousand and seven, we, I understand we got a new general ledger system. You're paying your comptroller seventy-six thousand dollars. We're getting a new general ledger system this year. Adjust for inflation, you would be paying a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. So I think, um, eighty-five thousand is pretty reasonable to ask for the amount of work that's involved for whomever becomes the comptroller. Payroll supervisors, senior count clerk typist, um, those are union, no adjustment there. Deputy comptroller, as I stated, we are, um, going into a new system, which is, there's always pains for that, um, and the amount of work that in the comptroller's department really actually needs a, um, a second-hand person to do most of the, um, book transfers and the journal entries and to get those kinds of things done. Uh, I know that I can utilize eighty-five thousand minimally from the ARPA funds for just the re- record-keeping and upkeep for the ARPA spreadsheet, and twenty-twenty-four is probably gonna be the busiest one yet, um, as funds will be moved back and forth based on how much has been used or where it needs to go, and there is gonna be some more reallocations. So I, I know that I can, it, come up with that in the record-keeping end of it. Um, equipment, uh, Mark said that we needed two new computers for, one for Amy, one for Linda. So that comes to three thousand dollars, um. And everything else, I'm just gonna be honest, I haven't been here long enough to really tell you, so I did my best guesstimation to get the numbers that I requested.
The difference between the executive budget the mayor put together and your request, was there a communication between the two of you, what the decrease was for?
Yes, it's in the eighty-five thousand dollars, um. We increased it, we're talk, we're looking at the funds in the ARPA. Um, I had been reviewing Joe Bolito's, um, invoices. Um, and he had done a lot of work, um, with the ARPA coming in and adjusting things. And I said that, I looked at it and said I can, I can easily find another fifteen thousand dollars where there's work being involved with the ARPA funds.
Speaking of Joe Bolito, I have this maybe a question for you, or finance, maybe the mayor. Um, obviously, we had to, uh, pull Mr. Bolito out of reserve retirement, um, to do some work for us. What is his status as far as that work? Um, has he nearly completed that? Um, how are we paying Mr. Bolito? How much are we paying Mr. Bolito? When will that end?
Um, I don't know off the top of my head, uh, how much, but I can get that for you. I don't know what his hourly rate is. He fills us, he submits an invoice. Very detailed.
It sounds like he's a private contractor.
Yes, yes, that's how we pay.
So he's still working on, what, twenty-two?
Yes, and that's primarily what he is working on, and, um, he, by the end of this month, it has to be done. There's, uh, he's very, very close. There's some issues with some things in cash, um, that he and Amy have been working on. Once that's completed, then we can bring in the auditors, and we can go from there. Um, it is my goal that this time next year, we don't have to call on Joe. Or maybe just I call on a special situation. Um, that's, that's my goal, and I have been really, really, really picking his brain on this poor man. Walks in, it's like he barely sits down. It's like, Joe, I have questions for you. But he's been very, very helpful. And, um, I believe with the new system and with what I've learned through him already.
So is this new system up at all yet?
The new system goes live on December fourth. I am beyond excited, sorry, I just can't. It, it will streamline a lot of items, um, and it will help all of the departments. It's, by this time next year, it will be great.
Jeff, uh, just to, and, wanna circle back to your, your question. Typically, when we do bring employees, uh, back, they come in as, uh, ten ninety-nine, like contractors, and they're usually at their hourly rate at retirement. And, uh, the invoice of services, uh, they're usually not consistent in terms of the number of hours, uh, they work. I know Joe's been trying to be, uh, consistent in it, but, uh, same thing occurs for, for example, Jeff and, uh, Joe and others that have retired, but we, we typically keep them to their hourly rate at their time of retirement.
So the, um, maintenance agreement for this new software, as we discovered during this approval of it, was significantly higher than what we currently pay. Is that covered in your maintenance agreement line?
So because we are not going a hundred percent live on December fourth. December fourth, we are going live with the General Ledger, which is my department. I'm not sure, Jen, did they say when they're going live with your department?
It'll be at the end, after.
After payroll?
Yes.
Okay, so payroll goes live in July. Um, they'll start working on it in February. Uh, Linda and Amy will have to run two payrolls simultaneously, two or three times, to make sure that the new system is got, has all of the coding that is in the old system. Um, and, correct me if I'm wrong, Mark, I, and I talked to them, they said they will not bill us because they're only doing one billing. They won't bill us KBS and Springbrook, so we're gonna see the hit maintenance agreement is actually gonna be in the twenty-twenty-five.
Okay.
Budget.
I just wanna make sure, 'cause twenty-twenty-four is not showing that increase, so.
We shouldn't see that increase in twenty-twenty-four.
Uh, at this point, I have nothing else specific, but I'm gonna hold that caveat that I'm sure I will with everyone at some point in time. Thank you. We go to council's page. Which is page twenty-one. I looked at some of the year-to-date spend, and Jen and Joe got back to me with one question in particular I had about, um, the year-to-date spend for fees. My concern is the year-to-date spend number I have is almost sixty-four thousand. So it is way over for twenty-twenty-three, and we're still only putting thirty-five-five in there for this year. So, um, I'm a little concerned about that. I don't know if that, they billed us past, and how, it didn't look like it was a future bill from what you sent me, if I read that correctly. So, um, I have some strong concerns with that. I wanna validate that that's even close.
Usually the fees are kind of bound, bond council fees if we're going out for a bond.
It was related to that?
Yep.
But it was extremely high.
Yep, so we had, uh, I'll, I'll have to check the bill. I know we had the bond and a ban, uh, this year. Uh, but we'll, we'll certainly look into that and get you some more information on it. Um, I don't think we anticipate next year, if we bond this year, then we won't have a high bill next year. If we do bond early into January, then we'll still won't see such, such a large bond, uh, fee, but we can certainly look into it and get some more information for you.
And speaking of that, I do not see anything in for a bond in twenty-twenty-four. I only see what we currently have in there. Is that correct? No fees for the bond payment? If we do a new one?
Uh, no, because that has not been authorized by the city council, so we can't add it in.
So what would happen in twenty-twenty-four if that comes to fruition? How do we work through that from a financial standpoint?
Thought it was about a hundred and sixty thousand?
Yeah, so it's, depends on the type of, uh, bond or ban that we issue. Some are interest-only, uh, some we, we include a principal payment in it. Uh, so it just depends on when it's issued and what the, the payment schedule is. I think it did provide a estimated payment schedule. Uh, folks need it, I can resend it as well.
I think it was around a hundred and sixty thousand, Jeff, for the six-point-eight.
That's if obviously we bond it for the whole amount.
That's correct.
Might've been one sixty-four, but I'm gonna say one sixty for sake of argument.
On page twenty-one, is it safe to assume that that fifty-dollar amount in the twenty-four, twenty-four part request needs to just move up to and bump those other two down?
They're offline. They don't, they're definitely on the online. The twenty-eight-five is applied to auditing. It should be auditing, I would assume, not printing and duplicating. The fifty should be there. The last three lines don't pan out together. That's it for me for right now. You just wanna break till seven-thirty, or?
Is this, is this, uh, fair game to ask any question?
Yeah.
Since we got a minute? One question on page ninety-seven. The other pay overtime part time, it looks like it's deducted. Are we getting reimbursed for that somewhere, or is that? Is it the parks?
Yep.
Yeah, it's, it's the different departments, right? You have different parts?
Yeah, they get paid out so, to track different salary lines. Uh, for like snow removal or leaf pickup.
Okay.
Uh, we transfer over. Um, and this year, we added actually additional one for the leave, leaf pickup. It was, um, so that's just salary, salaries coming out of that to different places, so we can accurately track how much time
Correct.
Uh, our employees spend doing that work.
I'm just unsure if those are reimbursed better. Thank you.
I think in the past it was, uh, what, we just kind of estimated the labor costs, and I think we're trying to get a better understanding of what those exact labor costs, or closer understanding of those labor costs. So we've created some additional, uh, buckets, if you will, uh, line items, so that we could track that, that bill back.
Then it's accurate.
One more, same area. Page ninety-nine. I'm sure they'll probably get in question if you can answer the other one for the other ones here. Um, the summer youth employment program, looks like it went up pretty substantially. Are they looking to expand that program, or?
No, we combined the summer, uh, summer labors, correct? We combined the summer, youth labors and the youth employment program together as well. I think that was at the parks recommendation, right?
Yes.
Yeah, the parks, uh, recommended that we do that, or asked that we do that.
Previously, Councilman Faulkner, that was only, uh, this line only included, uh, people who were mowing DOD lots. Um, and now this includes other parks minus the stadiums. The stadium had, it's a per.
So they wanna just wait, we'll wait five minutes and then the regular work session starts at seven. I wanna take a break. Before we get to the regular work session.
Clearly. Yeah, I was in late night.
Oh, at the game? It seemed not so much a fun game until.
Okay folks, we'll get started. Pass the time. We'll call this meeting of the Jamestown City Council full work session to order for Monday, October sixteenth. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Sheldon?
Here.
Reverend.
Present.
Here.
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 And President.
Here. We already did our budget presentations tonight. We had the clerk, treasurer, assessor, comptroller, information services, corporation counsel. And next week we have is what? I don't have it on.
DPW and Parks.
DPW and Parks.
DPW and Parks.
DPW and Parks. The first two weeks flop from the original.
Okay, and that'll be at six thirty again. At this time, I'll open it up for any remarks from the public. If you'd like to address the council, please leave your name, give your name and address. And we limit your remarks to five minutes. Anyone who wants to address the council this evening?
My name is Lorena Bernetti. My husband Sidney and our neighbor Elizabeth. We live at Broadhead Avenue between Newland and Kidder. We have a very large problem in that area right now with children. Anywhere from, you know, about this high and up teenagers. The teenagers are the worst. Usually on the weekend, especially on Friday night and Saturday night when there's no school the next day, they are running through everybody's yards. They're knocking over any lawn ornaments. They're egging houses. They're throwing produce on the porches. They have spray painted one car or some kind of paint on a car. I don't know if it's, they were able to get it off or not. They wake us up like one thirty in the morning, just going through the neighborhood and around the houses screaming and yelling and carrying on. They're up and down the street. They go across Newland. I don't know, I haven't talked to anyone on South Main, but they're over in that area too. We've had problems before in our neighborhood, but nothing like this. We've had children there, a lot of children, and they were respectful and didn't do this kind of stuff. But kids these days, they, they tell us that, hey, I says, well, do you want us to call the cops? They said, go ahead, they won't do nothing. You know, it's getting really pretty bad, you know? And I'm afraid somebody's gonna get hurt, especially there's this here, the one neighbor across the street. She said last weekend she seen the little girl that lives down the street there, sitting right in the road. And the bigger kids were playing in the road. Cars coming up and down the road. We had left and we came up the road. There's like twelve of them in the road. And of course you slow down. While they take their good old time moving out of the road. And then when you go by, they all kind of obscene words at you. It doesn't matter who it is, you know? So I just wondered if there isn't something that the city can do about this, especially when it's late at night.
Multiple times.
Multiple times.
How would you say perpetrators are the?
I'll tell you, I'll tell you something right now about the perpetrators. I come home this afternoon, I was shopped up in here and come in and pulled in the driveway, got everything. And I was looking out the window. And at the corner, the greenhouse on the corner, outside the street. There's four or five kids, pretty good size. Look at the little girl, like this. She's got a piece of wood this tall, trying to take out the window. She tossed it at the house. She missed, but she tried. And then she ran it down the street. All the older ones just kept walking. And I said, what's going, I never seen that before. I thought that was really crazy. You know, I mean, a little girl like that, a little girl like this, who's only this tall, stick is bigger than her.
So maybe you've heard this, and the police chief can jump in here as well, if you would like to. In two thousand eighteen, New York State enacted what they refer to as raise the age. So it used to be when you, if you were sixteen years old, you could be charged as an adult. New York State raised that up to eighteen years old. So you can't be charged as an adult if you're under eighteen years old. As a result of that change in two thousand eighteen in the budget. So what the police department is starting to, or having issues with, is they're having a difficult time charging juveniles criminally. Especially if a child is under the age of twelve, which is pretty much, you know, as far as I know, like I said, the chief can jump. You know, eleven year old can throw a brick through your car window, cause felony criminal mischief damage. And the police are gonna tell you that there's really not much they can do because they're, you know, under the age of twelve. So everything under the age of eighteen anymore either goes through probation, if the charge is high enough, or it goes through family court. Basically, New York State and the legislature, and when this was passed in two thousand eighteen, has made it vastly more difficult for the police to, to act on that. But what I have been adamant about is that the police officers need to be somewhat creative. And when it becomes possible, then the parents should be arrested, okay? And I'll read this to you. Under New York State penal law two sixty ten, endangering the welfare of a child. Subsection two states, being a parent, guardian, or other person legally cherished with the care or custody of a child less than eighteen years old. He or she fails or refuses to exercise reasonable diligence in the control of such child to prevent him or her from becoming an abused child, a neglected child, a juvenile delinquent, or a person in need of supervision, also known as a PINS. As those terms are defined in Articles ten, three, and seven of the family court. So what I'm encouraging for the police department to start doing when they possibly can, in situations like yours, if they are unable to make an arrest on the juveniles because of the raise the age, then if it is a constant problem and they're dealing with the same children over and over again, and there are too many crimes, then the parents need to be arrested under section two sixty ten of the New York State penal law.
I know that the people that moved into this greenhouse, at a corner from us, we never see the parents. We see twelve, sixteen kids on the porch. They gather, I don't know, since they moved in, they've got kids on up Broadhead, over on South Main, on down Broadhead. And they all come to that house. And you see this older guy that I've been told that he is supposed to be taking care of these children while the mother is working second shift, but he's worse than they are. He picks them up and throws them over the porch and the bushes and everything else. I mean, you know, it's, and the garbage? We just had our street done, was it last year or the year before? Everything redone, sidewalks and all, beautiful, you know? And in front of this house, the next day when you get up, there's garbage all over the street. The city just came up last week on a Wednesday, usually our garbage is picked up on Tuesday. For two weeks, they didn't put their garbage cans out. They've been in front of the house with garbage hanging off the top of them.
The back of the house is about three foot high, all kind of garbage back there. Because Grace lives on the other side of the street, you can see it from my porch over here, she pointed out to me. She couldn't come in late because she was ill.
If there's a lot of garbage, then that's something that can get addressed through the Department of Development. I mean, that's, that's a separate issue. But I, I feel your pain with the juveniles that are frankly are terrorizing some of our neighborhoods. Last weekend, I spent a good amount of time talking to a parent whose daughter was assaulted. She felt was assaulted. And she sent me videos of, of that that took place. And because of the age of the assailant, much not, not much could be done at the time and the case was closed out. I've since had a conversation with that juvenile detective. I emailed him a second video that, that I was provided by the mother. That gave further detail of the assault with possible charges that could be, could be forthcoming. Obviously, we don't want to put children in our legal justice system if we don't have to. But when, when it's, when it's a chronic problem, and it sounds like you guys are being terrorized in your neighborhood constantly, if we can't hold the children responsible because of legislation that was passed, then we need to go after the parents or whoever the caregiver is for those children.
Well, I thought maybe if the police would just patrol our area more after dark, when it's nighttime, because that's when they come out.
Is there a specific time, like a flip between three times?
Anytime, usually nine o'clock on. But I mean, we've even had them in the daytime, but in the daytime, you know, there's not much you can do. They don't come in the yard, but they're all over the streets and yelling and screaming and.
So they listen to one, two o'clock in the morning too?
Centered around one particular house?
Oh, yeah, because we'd been woke up at one, one thirty in the morning with them screaming, going through the yards all over for, for an hour.
Are they, are they pretty much centered around that one property? Is that where they're kind of coming from?
The whole neighborhood right there.
They're all in the.
Between, between Kidder and Newland, right in that area.
Chief, could you maybe reach out, or Captain Forster, reach out to these citizens and see if maybe we can.
I know exactly the, the individuals she's referring to. And I know the area and the house actually.
So I just, I, my name is with Margarita, I live at one thirty nine Broadhead, exactly across the street from them. So just to add on to what they're saying, my neighbor on the side, his house, his front window was broke by these kids. I have cameras, I have it on camera. My daughter emailed it to the police department. So they, they, we are getting it on camera. I mean, I feel like I'm Fort Knox on Broadhead Avenue, which is insane, but it is. I mean, I have solar lights, I have all kinds of stuff, floodlights everywhere. Because, I mean, what else can I do? I've been to the police department. The gentleman who I believe is the mother's boyfriend, whatever, he trespassed in my yard and went to my garage to rob me blind, but then he realized that he was on camera. And that I have dogs. And he seen the sign that said, and you could see, he turned around and left. He was, I have a four car deep garage, he was three cars in until he seen it. And then he's kind of like, oh man, I'm caught, and, and turned around. So I mean, I'm not sure what you're gonna do to hold these parents responsible. I heard that my children, I raised in that house, have not done anything like that because I'm responsible for them. But it's, it's hard for us who are homeowners, who, I mean, I told the police when I went down to show them these videos, I said, I'm looking at other houses outside the city of Jamestown. And he had nothing to say, but you're not alone.
We've been there for thirty-five, what, what, that goes to forty?
Forty-four years.
Forty-four years, and we did a lot of, it really looks nice. We had crime in the neighborhood before, drugs, fifty cars pulled across the street, all this stuff, eventually took care of.
You got rid of them?
Not rid of them. This one here, this is a new scenario here. This is a situation, they come up through a plate, Derek lives next door, great, but he just moved in, bought the house. And throw a, I was in the backyard, I didn't hear, they throw a plate, come out the greenhouse, throw a plate in my driveway.
In front of the garage.
And of course, but, Derek's, I mean, Derek went and picked up the plate, but he said, I think this belongs to you guys. You know.
They got home, they're not, you know, paying for it.
But the tree out front, they broke the branches off the, since it was an mixed tree, they broke the branches off of that. They egged the front porch on my porch. I mean, I don't know if they, if they're above the law, I guess, that they feel like. And that little girl, I couldn't believe she hit a piece of wood. And she kind of handed that to Wendy, said, if she didn't make it, thank God for that. But she, the other just walked out, the other four or five peoples walked out, and she runs behind them. And I told Lorena, I don't believe what I seen here. You know, this little fuck like this. I don't curse you out, she was a police officer too, you know?
So holding the parents responsible is a good idea, except for when the parents are the ones that are trespassing, trying to rob my garage. I don't know, and there's nothing that can be done to him. So there's that, because he turned around. But with that being said, I, I just, I, I don't know. I, I feel like every time the JPD puts up that little map on, on Facebook of where the hotspots are, more and more, our area is in the red. And that's just disheartening, because I don't want to move.
I don't either.
We don't want you to move.
We don't want you to move. We've got good neighbors around, we're dearly doing it. He done a great job at that house, he turned it around. And right across the street, they have good neighbors, real good neighbors.
Yeah, we got one, two, three, four, five, five of us right there in that area.
Derek bought the house next to me, I was one of the good guys. We have good people, you know, but we've got some bad eggs in there, it's messing all the streets. A lot of people didn't come to me for one reason, across the street, he was safe, she would have been up there too.
I mean.
You will get to it, so keep calling.
Yeah, and, and obviously, we, we don't want to see you move. I don't want to see you leaving your neighborhood. And you care about the money that you invested in your homes, and you've been there for so long.
We're gonna look at nice, real nice.
I would have a conversation with, with the chief, and maybe he can, he and his command staff can be a little creative with your neighborhood and come up with, with some results.
I don't know, I have talked to some businesses in that area, and they've had similar problems where they have caught the younger kids on camera, after hours in the dark, and they have gotten pictures of them. And they have reported them, and they intend as much as they can to prosecute, because they feel like if they don't, no one will take it seriously, whether they can hold anybody accountable, but to instill in these kids that you can't keep doing this, that you are going to reach a point where you will get arrested, and you will end up in jail if you continue to do this kind of thing. Breaking windows, vandalizing. But again, there is a curfew in the city, correct, for children? So can the parents be charged under the curfew? Again, because, but you know, there is a curfew. So they shouldn't be out here in the dark.
Names that live right next to the greenhouse, I don't make this up. And all the people that, I mean, I don't, I asked him, I said, how can you put up the racket and you live right here? And he said, there's nothing to do, daddy, to a lot in the morning, I come off a cigarette. I said, you kidding me? But he, I don't know, he's still there, but I don't know how he puts up the racket.
I'm not gonna speak for the chief, but I can tell you, he and I have been dealing with a similar issue on another side of town. And he's very frustrated as well, so.
Well, I'm very concerned, because there is a brick home that's right beside this problem house that has been emptied for quite a few years. And now somebody has bought it evidently, because there's been people in there, and they have been tearing, the windows were broke by these kids. The water had gotten in there and stuff. But they've been tearing everything out of there and remodeling it. And I think somebody just now moved into the downstairs, because we seen a U-ball there. Yeah, I don't know what these kids are gonna do to that house next. I mean, you know, maybe they'll make those people move too, I don't know. I would appreciate it if you guys could do whatever you can do. Even patrolling, maybe if they know that the police are going to be patrolling that area, that big group will move on, you know?
I think we're past that point, to be honest with you. Knowing the background of the children and the parents, I think we're to the point where people need to be arrested.
Do you do that, or at what point do I, it become maybe now to call the police? Because they come and then they disband, and then they come back together right after the police leave? At what point do I call CPS? Because obviously, these children are not being taken care of if they're running streets like this. I don't want to use that system, because I'm sure there's kids that are being physically harmed or worse. I mean, at what point do we have someone follow up with these parents? Instead of, oh, you've gotta keep your kid inside, or whatever they do? Because I, I have it on video where the cop met with the kids outside my house and said, you need to go home. And then thirty minutes later, they're back. And the cops have a lot to do, I'm sure, you know?
Sounds like, get aware of it, so.
Unfortunately, it's a counter property, and a lot of areas. I mean, I just should be aware of it.
It'll make me feel better.
Yeah, no.
And they're getting quite brazen sometimes. I had a constituent over in Linwood, they were ripping signs out and pulling tree branches and ripping. Guy called them out on it, said, put that sign back, you know, and save that tree or leave it. Oh yeah, well, he didn't do it, well, he walked right up into his face. He said, he's ready to block them. They're, they're getting, and they're kids.
Yeah, this little kid was cursing my wife out, and I called him.
Oh, I mean, I've never seen a girl about twelve, thirteen years old, the, the vulgarity that come out of her mouth was, that's when I told her, I says, why don't you go home and let your mom, mother wash your mouth out? So, I mean, I could, I mean, I was astonished. If my daughter talked to me like that, I would, mm.
Well, I said, we go.
Well, we know. So anyone else would like to address the council, this evening?
Hey, I'm Kevin Power, and it's six oh six four, so right before the bus stay town signs. So just so people can look up to me, guys. So a few years back, I don't remember exactly what year it was, it was around, around something, but I, one of the houses that was just down the road from us, and mind you, we live in the, in the really, you know, what's called the nicer part of Ward five. There was a house that had a meth lab inside of its garage, and I guess these people were also printing counterfeit money. It was like a house they inherited from, I think, an aunt or grandma that had passed away. And this was like the first time that I can remember from my childhood as really any major drug activity going on in the city. Shortly after this, I believe, is when the, when JPD put in their drug task force, which is awesome, because you guys do amazing work. As time went on, and, you know, we, we started having more of a, more of a drug issue within the city, and then the homelessness crisis and everything, just kind of everything collectively together. What I began to notice was, because I started getting into like, in the field of psychology, I was going to SUNY Fredonia, getting my bachelors in that. And I started to begin to notice an issue as far as mental health goes in accordance with drug addiction and also mental health issues of the homeless community. Well, my biggest concern is, I also worked at the hospital for, for quite some time in the ER. I would see a lot of these individuals be brought in by police, totally strung out, and, you know, clearly mentally in disarray. And I always kept wondering, like, you know, what help is there for these individuals in the community? I know we have an MHA here, which does amazing work as well, it's like the resource center in tandem. They, you know, they're really good at what they do as well. But from a legislative standpoint, I wanted to ask city council, like, what do, what do you guys have as far as ideas or proposals, or even something in place now to help with these crises? Because especially this year, I'm noticing it's getting worse and worse. I'm currently a student at, at JCC, I'm going back for, for another degree. And we just had the safety officer there send out an email and text alert because fentanyl is flooding the streets of the area so badly. We just had that one weekend where we had four fentanyl overdoses in one shot. And it's becoming, you know, a major safety concern. Not just for the individuals who are addicted to these drugs, who are in the homeless communities, but now also for residents who aren't necessarily dealing with these issues, now we have to deal with them firsthand. As a mental health advocate, it's tough for me, because I'm not seeing much being done from a legislative standpoint. The other question that I had as well, I very recently just got heavily interested in politics. There's not a lot of young people, I'm twenty-six, but there's not a lot of young people in my, and I'm Gen Z's, in my, so my generation that are really politically active. I'm starting to kind of get into that mindset because of how much issues I'm seeing right here at home and, and even just around the world. But I'm also curious if there are like organizations within the community that help to encourage younger people to get more active? I know that nationwide, there's things like the ACLU, which I, which I recently became a member of. But is there anything like that in the city that, that exists to help encourage young people to become more vocal and allow their, allow their voices to be heard and their opinions to be valid?
Does the college not have something?
They have some clubs, but it's, it's tough, because I, as a full-time student, I am working, I have to really do that. And unfortunately, a lot of the clubs they have in law classes are in session, so it's, it becomes difficult. But yeah, those are the two questions, is the mental health area for people who still deal with drug addiction, homelessness, and then that.
I was gonna change my thought based on what has happened tonight. First of all, I want to applaud these people for coming in here. There's not enough citizens that will stand up for their home, their neighborhood, and the community. I've been doing it for a long, long time. And people address city council, and they wonder why things happen. They wonder why we're in this position. We wonder why, what's gonna happen with their property and the family. This community is based on premises of people with sanctity of life, opportunity to live free, opportunity to live healthy, opportunity to go without violence. It's ever-changing. I've been here forty-five years, and I've seen it change dramatically, unfortunately. I've been able to take care of my own issues. However, some people can't, so they rely on the city to take care of it for them. So we stabilize this community in this region that we live in, called the city of Jamestown, by the quality of life that these people have to endure, or not to endure, every day. So what do you do about it, Mayor? I mean, do you take a walk over there and talk to these people while you're out campaigning? Do you knock on the doors? Buy the greenhouse, buy it, tear it down. That's the way it's done in other cities. They buy problem houses and they tear them down. Whatever the price is, buy it. Buy it, and there's more like that. Otherwise, a problem just rotates itself over and over and over again. So remove the problem by removing the house. Okay, why am I here other than that? The American Rescue Plan, been with us, I've been with it, with you for as long as it started. And I'm looking at this tonight regarding, and I'm not clear. And I'm glad the city has updated. And I'm glad the city has updated it on the expenditures to October sixteenth, which is tonight. I'd ask that to be current. But I'm confused a little bit on the presentation because in the columns that are out there, and quite frankly, this is money that could help support some of the things that you want to see done. Public safety. You have a column called Left to Spend, Total Spent. What does that mean? So if you look at that total with what is also next to it called total spent per KVS. Who's KVS?
Systems offline that they use.
Okay, well, that's good enough. There's a discrepancy between what that is and the last column. So I would think what you'd want to do is to call out what's been spent and what hasn't been spent and separate them. That's a complaint in terms of credibility and acknowledging what I think is a way for people to see where their money is going, what remains to be done. Going down to the next column, which by the way, Department of Development, ARPA program reports hasn't been updated since February twenty-third. So if you want to be current, and this is election year to tell people what you've accomplished, I think you probably ought to be current on your data. And what you've spent, what you haven't spent and what you're going to spend. Now, the reason why I bring that up is that the remaining ARPA money is critical to what can be used. Now, you've got in the city budget, police vehicles, four of them. That could be accomplished with American Rescue Plan funding. Why put it on the tax base? Not only will the tax base come later, because they could acquire these cars this month if you approve that in the next voting session. Same way with the fire department. You got that on the city's budget. Could be done with American Rescue Plan. What you haven't spent, what you're going to spend. What's available, what's not available. Council should know, I hope, administration should know. So there's a benefit for lowering taxes, both in a bond anticipations, both in terms of stabilization and what it does to the long-term revenue generation for the city taxpayers. So you can lower the taxes by removing some of these things and spending down the American Rescue Plan money in public safety issues. Why wait till next year? And your bonding, as you bond out for the most recent acknowledgements under the bonding requirement, have to be the last resort for bonding. Because there's a rationale behind bonding in terms of the costs associated with it. I brought that out last time. It's double of what you presented unless you waver it on down. So I would ask that when you look at the future of this city, not only for these people, for others that may want to come, you have to stabilize these neighborhoods on the public safety aspect of it. Whatever it takes, do it. Takes more policemen over there walking the beat, riding a bicycle, whatever it takes to get it done. And then hold the elderly people, as councilman Russell said, accountable. Why do we live here if we can't get this job done? Why would we live here if we can't help these people? Why do you run for office if you can't help these people? That's my question. Don't say we're look at it. Don't say we're going to think about it. Do it. Buy the house. Tear it down. The last comment. I'm going to, but they had their turn. The last comment I have is that I listened to the Mayor Arnold debate and I was kind of concerned that we, we have situations where elected officials want to embellish their record. And the mayor was dragged into public safety. It wasn't something he stood out on early on. Check the record. Check my talk. Gun violence, all the issues. The limited budget that was presented in public safety. Only after a considerable amount of time between people like me talking and city council asking questions, I would say, did public safety have the outreach effort that it needed. And it still needs it. So when you talk about what I've done or what we've done, you better be careful what you say because maybe you really haven't done it.
Anyone else want to address the council?
I just, I just have a question. Melissa Better, eighty-three, forty-six, walking the street. Crystal's not here tonight to ask the question, but I was just curious. About a year ago in October, the city council approved a million dollars for the land bank to demolish some houses. And according to my opinion, and my opinion only, we've only seen one house come down. Actually, that's facts, not opinion. So, so my curiosity is, is that Crystal has said over time that all these houses are gonna come down and that house took a day and a half to come down in one year. So my question is, is that all this million dollars, who's making the land bank accountable for the demolitions? Does anybody know?
I think some of what they've attempted to do, because we have so few, you know, companies that can do the demolitions, they're trying to bundle them to get outside demolition experts to come in from Buffalo, Erie, PA, maybe Ole Miss. So it, it will take time to bundle them. They'll get a better cost. Somebody may come through. A lot of the demolitions they prefer to do in the winter because it's actually better in terms of dust and debris and all of that. The other aspect of it is they have to check for lead and asbestos because that creates an environmental issue. And they have to get people who are certified. They are not easy to come by. So all told, everybody would love to get those demolitions done yesterday. It's unfortunately unprocessed and at the mercy of... People don't want to come in with a crew for one house. They want to come in for a crew.
But it seems like a crew came in for one house. So that's what I'm saying.
But it depends. It depends on if you're going, you're only gonna get them as they're willing to do it. They do other things too. They don't rely on the city to do all the demolitions.
I, I, I get that. I just have watched the meeting where the money was allocated and I realized that it's been a year since that money was allocated. And that house came down the year to the date of the first talk about it. So October third was the first day it was talked about. October third of twenty-twenty-three, the house on Fairmount Avenue came down. You had the people here. There's a house across the street from the high school that I have been complaining about for four years. There's a house across the street from Ring School that has been burnt for five years, still there. This is a problem. Our school zones are not safe. I've been complaining about that for four years and I'm tired of it. You drive through a school zone, you should feel like you're in a school zone, not just driving through. And today, I was, I was driving through Bush School, you know, school zone, maybe it was like three fifteen. This lady was fly, almost flying out of the parking lot. You know, what are, what are we gonna do as a city to protect the children? You know, I, 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 I'm just, I'm just concerned. I'm, I'm just continuously concerned with having a big bulldozer there for a day and a half, tearing this house down. And why didn't just drive the bulldozer to the next house, right down the corner?
I appreciate, but here's what I will do. The next available meeting that the director of the land bank, Gina Paradas, can come in. We will bring her in and ask her to give us an update on what's going on, how are things going? And that's, and I agree with you.
Yeah, because I mean, there was, there was three, there were three council people that had brought up the concern of giving the money to the land bank. Why not the city keep that? So I'm just going on by what was said. And, and all that money that was spent to give it to the land bank for them to do it could have went to the DOD to pay that cost, to get those houses down.
And there are concerns they don't have the staffing because, I, I know.
But there's money, but, but then I did look at the budget this year and I think there's money somehow. There's money and they're allocated. Now how come they can't do it that? So that's my, that's my concern.
We will come, come to the next meeting at six o'clock next week, Monday.
And we will try to get an answer to that or maybe change it.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Hi, Russell, I figured we'll shoot twelve all avenue. I'm just curious and I don't know what the aspects would be of it, but I know you need licensed people to move the lead. But obviously the best time is during the winter. Why can't you have a DPW tear down these houses after the lead is taken care of? Like last winter was a mild winter. Maybe they played, they plowed, I don't know, eight or ten times, whatever. The DPW's sitting down there instead of painting and doing the stuff, which eventually doesn't leave it. They could, you could get them on, on the third shift and, and have them tearing down these houses. Of course, you know, it's probably a little noisy, depends where it is. But even, they could do it during the day if there's not plowing. Why? I don't know if you'd have to, what you would have to go through. But I'm sure you would save some money having the DPW do it. They've got the equipment. They've got the trucks. Have someone take out the lead, do the lead exposure test and, and let the DPW do it. It's just a suggestion. You can look into it if you want. If you don't, that's fine, but just a suggestion.
Thank you, thank you.
I tried to get the DPW to do electrical work for us under the bridge.
I'm speaking for a constituent who wants to know how or what could be done on Martin Road to extend the school zone closer down the hill. It's quite a raceway going to and from Jefferson School on Martin Road. So I, I don't know if it's a DPW thing or for law enforcement or a school thing.
I think it's a state law, I'm not entirely asking.
It can be changed.
I know, we brought up it. Is there, is there a requirement for?
I think it's just DPW's.
Is there?
Their policy.
Specific state law? You can only have a school zone for so many feet?
He has to go address the council on that matter. If I can get back to him, then we can say we're looking into it. It might be a DPW thing.
Yeah, I spoke to him as well. He had the county come in and check it out. I think he's asking them about it too for some reason. But yeah, he's quite concerned about extending it down toward his house.
Well, while you're at it, we need signs in both directions. I need to know where the school zone starts. I've been talking about this forever. Where they start and where they end. Because come down Main Street today, I nearly got blown away by two tractor trailers flying in love school as a block away from my office. I'm not kidding. If you want to see a free-for-all in a freeway, come down Main Street anytime during the day when the trucks are going to White's Men's and try to make that corner around Eighth Street near Love School. We've got little kids all over. There are school signs. Oh, my goodness, I almost got taken out today by two tractor trailers just to get out of my car by my office.
Yeah, and they can't keep the posts in there at eight for the main neither. If you notice, they're always down.
No, no, so I mean, I agree with you. But you know, we need clear signage, delineating this is a school zone. We need to slow down because it's all over. But Main Street is terrible because the trucks that go through main are awful.
Well, there has been money allocated through this State Streets Program. And we'll have to speak of that, of what might happen.
Is there anyone else who'd like to address the council? If not, we move on to our committees.
Good evening, guys. My name's Robert Riede. I live in six oh four Lafayette in the city. One of my customers approached me the other day. He lives over at three fifty-one Van Buren. Of course, that's not the ward I live in, but I did reach out to Brett and I reached out to Jeff. He drives down that street and his car's been, his car's been broken into four times. One, it's been locked in the last ten days. There's no streetlights on that road. If you drive past his house, you might as well walk right out that window. It's that dark. So I don't know if I can bring that. I brought it up to Randy. I wanted to bring it up to the council. We need a couple of streetlights on that street because vandalism.
Which stretch is it?
Three fifty-one Van Buren. He's really concerned. Everybody's car is getting broken into every night. I said, well, I'll reach out to Jeff or Brett, not really the ward I live in, but I'll bring it up to the council and let him know what I, you know, what you can do about it.
If we drive down there and I check it out.
And then on each pole is the pole number. And then that number would go to public safety, to the clerk for a light request. And so on each pole, they have those little numbers.
Okay.
And you just find out which, if you check out, like, if there's one missing or there's a dead spot and there's a pole there, just get the pole number and then pass it on.
Okay. I'll let them know what you guys want to do. All right, thanks.
Yep, thanks, Rob.
Thank you.
Okay, want to move on now to?
Here, anyone, one ten West Third Street Hotel, Jamestown. I just want to speak in support of the citizens who are concerned with security of the neighborhood. My, my recommendation would be block clubs. Talk to your neighbors. Those who can afford to, get cameras under their gutters facing out into the public street so that you can have a block club monitor the activity coordinated. Police can't handle it all. They're chasing bad guys with guns and they're sticking their hands in pockets for fentanyl. Don't trust them to get video footage of everything. Get the video yourself. Collect the evidence so they have something to work with. That's my suggestion. Thank you.
Well, I will speak up for the Burnouties. They have been a member of the Neighborhood Watch Group since probably two thousand, two, two thousand one, two or three, when I was very active. So they already have one established there.
Yeah, the involvement of new neighbors is important.
We'll move on to our committee reports. Ken, want your comments?
Sure. We have a resolution that the executive assistant to the mayor be authorized to attend the National League of Cities Summit on November sixteenth to eighteenth in Atlanta, Georgia, with expenses paid pursuant to section seventy-seven B. Unfortunately, Mr. Mayor, your budget is way over already in education and travel. Five thousand was the budget, but the last number I have is ten thousand, six hundred and fifty-one dollars and thirty-nine cents year to date.
Yep, we're expecting reimbursement for a large chunk of that to come back for travel expenses, but we can get that too.
Second resolution is for applied to state funding on the New York State Governor's Traffic Safety Committee Police Traffic Services Program. And whereas the city application has been approved, therefore it be resolved that the mayor be and he hereby is authorized and directed to execute a grant agreement with the New York State Governor's Traffic Safety Committee Police Traffic Services Program in the amount of eight thousand, five hundred and fifty-six dollars and no cents for the period of October first, twenty twenty-three through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Anybody have any questions? Resolution number three, you were provided a whole bunch of backup from Zach and Chief Kuhn. Is resolved that the mayor is authorized to execute agreements with EE Austin and Son of Erie, PA, Farrell Roofing of Dunkirk, New York, and Alstrom Schaefer Electric of Jamestown, New York for emergency structural roof repairs at Fire Station five, one ninety-five Fairmount Avenue for a total amount not to exceed two hundred, twenty-six thousand, seven hundred, ninety-three dollars and no cents, subject to the approval of the Corporation Council as to form.
I'll just note, the only thing different, the PEC you got was that we separated the resolutions out. That got put on the agenda as one long one, and so we wanted to keep them as separate ones. So everything else is still the same in your backup.
So the only money to come out of contingency is ninety thousand dollars. The rest will be paid through, through the insurance. Question I have, Carol, could you also let us know what remains in the contingency after tonight? Because we have two resolutions coming out of that. Thank you. Do you want me to do the new business one now just because it's falling under finance anyway? So as you recall, we had to send out the resolution that was approved for the safer grant. So the bill from the attorneys was twenty-one thousand, one hundred and sixty-nine dollars, which Corporation Council referenced. I had asked for a resolution to be prepared to increase appropriations, judgments and claims twenty-one thousand, one hundred and sixty-nine dollars and decrease the contingency account twenty-one thousand, one hundred and sixty-nine to pay for that legal services bill that was required.
Did number four get approved? I know you mentioned it, but.
Yeah.
Yes. Okay, thank you. Yes, okay, thank you.
Tim, with what Elliot showed us, remaining in the budget there for claims, why are we pulling that out of contingency?
Really, I don't know that, there was some complaints that council incurred it, not judgment and claim, so just thought it was the right thing to do. That's it for finance.
Could I have a brief discussion or a moment to talk about something? Speaking of the right thing to do, I wanted to bring up a potential crisis looming for some of our senior citizens that are sixty-five years or older in our community. Some of these senior citizens have, are dropping off the star rebate or, or the rebate from the city. People get the STAR program, the advanced STAR program, but then the city also has a program if you're sixty-five or older and if you make under nineteen thousand dollars a year, you can get a further tax break from the city. What is occurring now and has been occurring is as a result of some increases in social security, some of these seniors are falling off and are unable to get this rebate from the city because now they're over nineteen thousand dollars. To further exacerbate that, social security has announced that next year our seniors will be getting an increase of approximately three point two percent on their social security. So as a result, we're going to be having more seniors that are falling off than the city tax rebate. What that potentially cause for these seniors is their property taxes could potentially double and cause some of these seniors to lose their homes because they can't pay the property taxes anymore because they're losing these rebates. So I looked into this and approximately thirty-eight homeowners. What I'm proposing is that we raise this nineteen thousand dollar a year income level to at least match the county. The county is currently twenty-two thousand dollars a year. So I am proposing that we either match the county's twenty-two thousand dollars a year or we go above that to protect some of our seniors that are sixty-five years or older, that are living on these low incomes and they have the potential to lose their homes because they're losing this tax rebate. So approximately thirty-eight homeowners, if we raise this rate to twenty-two thousand dollars a year, approximately thirty-eight homeowners would come back and the city exemption if the income limit was increased to twenty-two thousand. The total assessed value is one million, eight hundred thousand and they receive half, so nine hundred thousand dollars. Times the city tax rate of twenty-three dollars and sixty-eight cents equals a savings to these seniors of twenty-one thousand, three hundred and twelve dollars, which obviously is a loss to the city in revenue. I think the city can afford to lose twenty-one thousand, three hundred and twelve dollars to protect some of our seniors that could potentially be looking at losing their homes as a result of losing this rebate by the increase in social security. So I am going to be pushing going forward here that we raise the current dollar amount for salary from nineteen thousand dollars a year to somewhere between twenty-two and twenty-four thousand dollars a year to help these seniors out so they potentially don't lose their homes in the future. So I'm going to be talking to individual council members and I'm going to be looking for support to raise this dollar amount.
We looked at this several years ago, I know that it's come up before.
I brought it up last year and was waiting, there were some questions that were being resolved.
Yeah, it hasn't changed in at least a decade.
I know that, I mean, just, I would only concern, I'd have the exact numbers of what, how many people, what was the percentage? What's the total amount that would be lost in revenue so that we can all look at it and make sure?
Sure, and that's what I was just getting, if you go to the twenty-two thousand dollar.
Twenty-two, twenty-four, so we break it out.
Yeah.
Did Lisa provide that detail?
Yes.
Can you forward that, that detail to everybody then?
Yes, yeah, I asked her, I reached out, I asked her to provide the numbers to me because I, I've been approached by several seniors that are concerned that, you know, by them falling off, they're not going to be able to afford to pay their taxes and they potentially lose their homes.
So correct me if I'm wrong, Eddie, but Mayor, you have the resolution for that ready to go, right? Because we talked about this.
It is a, it is a local law, we would just need someone to sponsor that. Yes, I, I don't think we have an amount put in there, but.
Right, so then we talked about it last year about this time, but if we need, if we're going to act on that, we need to do it like this month.
I would like to see it done as soon as we can and I would love to sponsor that.
I'll have Lisa and Elliot pull the last local law, I think they had on it and we can send that around to you guys.
Then it can go through finance and devo run by the end of the month.
A local law has to sit for thirty days.
Right, I mean, it would be presented by the end of the month or devo run by the end of November.
Giving time for tax bills at the end of the year.
Is that it for finance? For, did we have anything for housing?
No, we're waiting till next week and I already got, we'll get a report on demolitions and progress next Monday. So come at six o'clock if you want the update. All the council members will want to be there at six o'clock.
Move on to public safety, Brett, another couple things there.
We have the same two resolutions, I went through finance and for the grant, the New York State Government Traffic Safety Committee Police Traffic Services Program, eight thousand, five hundred and fifty-six dollars. And the second one is, has to do with the roof at fire station number five or one ninety-five Fairmount. Other than that, I just, I want to commend the police chief supervisors, especially the road patrol. It seems like they've been under attack. Whether they've been exposed to fentanyl or assaulted by citizens in Jamestown. Just want to commend you, you and your staff for doing a fantastic job. I'm sure they don't get enough thanks, but I would just want to extend my thanks to them. That's all I said.
Just another thing for public safety, the chief had asked about, talking about Halloween hours. It's been six to eight in the past and should, do we have to have anything go through committee or just kind of announce that or how do you?
You just have to make that decision and we.
I think last year we threw up the whole concept because of the same, does, does people have different views on, should it be five to seven or six to eight?
The only concern I have from five to seven is even though it might be a little lighter, people aren't home. It's, it's a rush to get, I mean, it's, it doesn't matter that much to me, but if people feel strongly about having it during lighter hours, but you know, it's always been six to eight. Is that something you want to discuss or think about or?
Tim, any input, chief?
That's correct, yes.
That will be a Tuesday this year again, Tuesday, the thirty-first this year.
Sounds good to me.
All right, and there was nothing for public works, right?
Nothing unless anybody has anything they'd like to say, but Mr. Reed had talked about the, about the street lights that were brought up, but other than that, if anybody has anything?
Robert, I lived on that street, but I'm trying to think of where the streetlights are in there unless they change them, but I think, does he live, that's down toward the bottom, isn't it?
I'm not sure, he didn't tell me, he said it's somewhere near Burr Street, whatever.
Yeah, I, I lived down there, that was where I lived, three, three thirty-seven, so three fifty-one's probably just down from there. And it is, I think I remember, it was kind of dark as you go down towards Sturgis. There's probably a couple of poles or a pole down there that.
I'll leave there daylight hours tomorrow.
Or you know what, it's even better, go at nighttime. And then you can see where the dark spots are and then you can actually see, just check out if there's, you know, like a skipped pole. It might look good, it's easier to see at nighttime, you can tell where the dark, dark pole spots are there.
Thanks, Paul, head level of it on the poles.
It's black.
They're black and white. They're usually like five digits.
Yeah, but they're, you know, because wind streams sometimes have numbers, but you have to look for the DPU, it's black and white.
This one's probably kind of hits public safety as well as public works. I've gotten a call from a gentleman that lives on Fraser and he's concerned about the crosswalk across Barrett to Harrison going to the water, the River Walk, you know, underneath the Viaduct and just that it's not safe, not safe to, to cross there and just wondering what, what can we do to just improve the conditions of that crossing area? You know, we got the green boxes for the bikes, but he just doesn't feel very safe trying to cross Harrison. So you got Harrison, you got Steel, you got all these streets coming together and he's trying to cross, coming down Barrett to get over to the, the River Walk area. So I told him I would bring that up, we just haven't had a DPW meeting or public work meeting. So I just wanted to make sure that that gets out there just so that he knows that somebody's at least concerned and listening to us and says it. But it's right there at Barrett and Harrison, just that crossing, well, not Harrison.
Yeah, but you're kind of hindered by the bridge.
Yeah, with that bridge, yeah.
It changes after the bridge.
Yeah, then it goes to Steel. But I told him I would bring that up and I just wanted to make sure that at least I would have his text and everything before I.
Speaking of crosswalks, I throw this out there, I keep getting inundated by administrative from Jamestown High School, teachers from Jamestown High School, that they would like to see an additional crosswalk on Second Street in front of the high school that leads up along the fence, goes across the street where the fence is, where the post office is there. There's a one crosswalk up maybe twenty-five yards, thirty yards up the road, but they want to see a second one right there in front of the school possibly with more lighting or signage or something. Cars zip up through there after school, before school and there's a lot of teachers that are concerned about the kids at the high schools, that someone's going to get hit.
You mean between the old post office and the?
Used to be the veterans park.
Yes.
There's a, the chain link fence that runs right next to the post office, they have the chain link gate and there's a sidewalk that runs right down between Second and. It used to be the veterans memorial park.
I know the discussion is, is that you would have to remove all the curbing and everything right there in front of the, in front of the high school in order to put the crosswalk right there, so I don't know if that would.
We'll talk to Mark on it and see what he thinks.
They don't follow the one that's already there.
Well, we're hoping that if there's two right there, but the, the, a large majority of the kids seem to use that right there, right dead in front of the school and onto that sidewalk that runs to Veterans Park.
Who's responsible for following that in the, that sidewalk in the winter?
The, the, the city does all of Second Street, I know that.
Because I know in the past that hasn't gotten plowed and that's a concern too, or cleared at least.
I think that's where they actually start at and they head east, but.
Isn't Second Street part of the state route because they're going to redo Second Street? I don't know how far down, but I know the state's going to redo that.
They're going to redo all that.
Right, and that's what I said, I wonder, you're going to have to deal with the state in terms of, I mean, it's, it's just more layered because they have to have their input like they did with Washington.
Yeah, you're partially right, but they are going to start at Fort Avenue this time. So, but you're, you're still right in what you're saying.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, just be prepared, we've got to get the state involved to decide what's okay and what isn't and they give you more room over things that you think are good, that they don't necessarily like where the lights are placed and just like.
So you're saying all the Second Street there in front of the school is going to be all redone by the state?
Well, they're starting at foot and going toward the, but I'm just saying.
So why would they care what's going on down the street?
Because it's still part of the state route.
Jeff, I will say the superintendent did reach out about that same issue about crosswalks and kind of the safety zone in front of the, the high school. So he has been working with Public Works to try to figure that out, I'll follow up on it.
Yeah, definitely, I'd like to see another crosswalk there, I'd like to see more, more signage, some lights or something. I just, I just foresee a child getting hit right there in front of the school. I think it can be avoided if we can, if we can make that, that area safe.
Why isn't there a crossing guard there, like, you know, I mean, if they need a crossing guard, they've got them at some of the other schools. Maybe we need a person directing traffic there and getting the kids. I, I mean, I think you're, I, I, I know your points, I'll take it because it is a free-for-all some mornings. I try to avoid that area at all costs. I don't have kids going to school anymore, but somebody almost needs to direct traffic because people are looking in all directions and not paying attention to what's in front of them, the kids cross everywhere.
I, I had someone also reach out to me about, you were talking about crossing guards, they wanted to know what happened to the crossing guard down on, was there one that used to be on Third Street, right by Lenz and Paul Avenue right there?
Yes, yes.
So they, they, they reached out and they, they wanted to know why isn't there someone there for the kids? They're concerned about someone getting hit there and they even went out, they, they said that employees from Lenz often go out there and, and help the kids cross there on Third Street.
There was one there, but I hadn't, now they said that isn't the one at all this year.
Yeah, this was a parent that has a child who goes to Lincoln, they reached out to me and they said that there's dozens of kids that live down on the side streets off of, and they're, they're concerned, yeah, I mean, the signage is there, the crosswalk is there and they were more concerned about a crossing guard that used to be there and they'd like to see that replaced.
Yeah, I've been seeing one there in years, a couple of years.
Another thing that should be enforced at the high school when you're talking about that is people don't abide by the streetlight signs that don't, no stopping and dropping their kids off. You're going around them, the kids are running in front of you, getting out of their mother's, trying to hang on to the fence and that's inside.
Well, I'll, I'll, I'll give kudos to the police chief here and the members of the Jamestown Police Department. They are, they are all over that in the mornings, every single morning, they are there. It is the, I, I should say that I've never seen it enforced religiously every single day until Chief Jackson came along. It's, it's been great to see that.
I have a question for the chief, how many speed trailers are there, one, two?
There's two, there, there's three actually, but one's out of service.
Are they assigned as of now? Do you have them out?
We do, but the problem is, is they're, they're powered off solar. So the less, the less sunlight.
Plus you have to worry about being, people across the line, you're at mine shop, worried about it being sun fired.
Are we ready for anything else or? It's your turn, I guess, do you have some things?
I just have two and they're very brief. Number one, the, this Saturday from eight to noon at Bergman Park is going to be the bulk trash amnesty day in electronics recycling. So feel free to remind your residents about that.
Where is it, which one?
Bergman Park.
Okay, was that on the last week there?
Yep, yep. And then October twenty-eighth is going to be the second annual trick or treat trail on the River Walk from five to seven, sponsored by the Parks Department and a bunch of our unions, employees and different organizations. So we're really excited to have that again. It goes kind of around the entire trail area. I've been told there might be hay rides somewhere, I don't know how this is going to work, I'm skeptical of that, but feel free to come down and try it out.
Let's hope we get, last year it was perfect weather.
Didn't they, they ran last year in the DPU hard one?
They, they may have, I'm, I'm still skeptical.
Let's hope it's a good weather.
That's, that's all I have for you guys, just wanted to give some dates.
Five to seven.
Five to seven, five to seven, yeah.
Just one announcement, if you don't get your shredded paper taken by the DPU, it needs to be in a clear plastic bag. So if you were trying, they will not take any of the paper if they see a plastic bag on top of the paper. So be sure to put it in a clear plastic bag, they are making sure people are picking it up, but if it's not clear, they won't take it. They had to do redos today because it was very dark and they could not tell that the paper wasn't clear plastic. Just so you know.
But they will recycle shredded paper?
They will recycle shredded paper, but it has. They will recycle shredded paper, but it has to be in a clear plastic bag. Otherwise, they don't take it. They don't know what it is and they are not taking garbage that isn't in the container, but they will put it on top of.
This way it's paper for the first time in two months.
Pardon me?
It's the first paper.
I know, I know. We had to go to the transfer station.
You can't just stuff the shredded in with your.
Unless you want to. Well, you could, but it ends up all over. You have a lot of it in the office. You could do that too, but if you want it to not blow all over.
Yeah.
Put it in a bag.